Six o'clock, I'd like to call the caucus score. First piece of legislation from the street sidewalks, buildings, public parks, buildings, grounds, and general improvement committee for emergency passage. An ordinance accepting the biggest bid of state line paving, LLC 11-822-SOUTH AVENUE, NORTH LINE, OHIO 44452, for the 2015 Lordstown Street resurfacing project and declaring an emergency. Comments? Should we pass that this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, the next one's from the Board of Public Affairs for emergency passage and ordinance having Martin Eller buy the used 2003 Apple. Comments? May as well pass that.
Yes, please, because they've been wanting the car.
And the third one's from finance for emergency passage and ordinance authorizing the clerk to transfer the sum of $39.44 from the general fund into the unclaimed money fund pursuant to ordinance 3999, declaring an emergency. Comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd also like to see this passed tonight.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Are there any questions on the minutes in front of you for disposal this evening? Okay, hearing none. Are there any questions on the bills? Hearing none, is there anything the council would like to discuss?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On the way up here tonight, I stopped at the gas station. Up here, there was gas, and residents, Marbury wanted to know, said they'd just read on Facebook that the Newt Township trustees were going to fly the flag of half-mast from the ruins that were killed, wanted to know if the village should have it.
I had no problem with that.
I don't either. Just something I thought I'd bring up, see what interest was.
When are they flying? From now through when?
I don't know. They didn't know the exact details of it.
Yeah, I'll give it to you a little more. Anything else the council would like to bring up? I got one thing. I don't know if anybody's been getting phone calls about mosquito spraying, but I've had a lot of residents saying it did work. You know, I know there's a difference of opinion from some people on council. I would have no problem proceeding with some mosquito spraying because, but you know, then everybody says, "Well, mosquitoes don't breed on the blacktop." So, I'm not here to argue with anybody, but I'd like to hear, you know, some council opinions, see how they feel about this subject.
Yes, I'll speak up on it. I think mosquitoes generally breed in stagnant water, being roadside ditches or puddles in your backyard, or puddles in the woods. If you're going to do it effectively, some communities used to do it from the air and spray the whole political subdivision. If you're willing to do that, I think it'd be effective. The other way, I'm not so sure. I noticed John was kind of nodding his head down there.
Well, I was waiting on you, Bob, to finish, and I was gonna just say a little bit, because years ago, as a department head in the village, the village paid for me and Mr. Ebling, because he was also a department head, to go to a class, and it was, it was a very interesting class. And what you just touched on is exactly what they taught in that class, that this machine that goes down the road, and I know there's been new development in the chemicals and different things, it's a contact spray. The life of a mosquito, according to that class, was either five or seven days. This spray that we hire, this company to come and go down our roads to spray, if it touches a mosquito, it's going to kill it. Once that spray hits the ground, it's done killing mosquitoes, and there's a lot of hazards. If you read the hazard sheets with that spray, aquatic life, now they're spraying it right into the ditches, the ditches feed our ponds and stuff like that, and the money that we're spending for a mosquito to live five to seven days, you spray now, so what's it going to do for you for next week or whatever? What you said about the aerial thing, that is the only way to kill mosquitoes, they actually have a little pellet, it's made out of clay, and it has a larvicide inside of it. They hire helicopters or airplanes to go around. It is unbelievably expensive. That's why no community usually do it, but they said right in that class, it is the only mosquito, the only way to kill the mosquitoes to do any good.
What happens if you get a rain after you spray? There's no residual effect?
That's, well, they'll tell you there's a residual effect. Okay, how far does that spray cover? It depends upon which way the wind's blowing, everything about it. So, if a mosquito still flies over and lands into the area that might have got hit by that spray, chances are it could die. I don't know, but it's not, to me, I can't support it because I don't see it working, and the cost of it is just getting ridiculous. In the years people said, "Oh, that spray's working good" and stuff, mosquitoes, they need water for them to hatch. If you have a drier season, they don't hatch. So, people are going to think, "Oh, jeez, it really worked," you know? This year, everybody knows what the water's like out there, so I don't care what you do, it's not going to stop the mosquitoes, and that's my own personal opinion. The rest of the council can say what they want.
You know, when I get the phone calls, I gotta pass it on because I don't have the authority. Some people seem to think that the mayor can just sit and, "Hey, just go out of purchase order and go for them." Well, you know, I know I can't do that.
Terminex is actually advertising on the radio that these people, if their house is really that bad, Terminex is supposed to have some kind of a spray that, if I heard him right, it's some kind of a garlic oil. And they spray it in your property, and then if the mosquitoes do something into that stuff, it kills them too. So, I mean, they could dig for it and try that or something, but I just can't support spraying down the middle of the road.
Does anybody know what the cost was in the past?
I had Dale call up to find out.
$184 on that, or four of them, plus one of our employees, obviously on overtime at night to drive with.
And how many hours does it take?
Approximately six.
And they have to do it how many times? Because it only lasts...
Yeah, it only lasts, actually, if you read Alexander's quote from last year and this year, the quote states right in it that it only kills adult mosquitoes that are alive at the time of contact, so...
It'd be probably thirteen, around $1,300 estimated for application.
But that's, oh, it's Mr. Mayor, Mayor?
Yeah.
But when I was in charge of activity, and I think that's when Dale brought the information from the same company that was doing this spraying for it about how hazardous it was, that's why we decided not to use it, because there's a lot of side effects on that. And we know this year, look, we're like a ten-year rain deal, you know? We had this like, 2005, we had this much rain, so, and I know my yard is covered with water in the back and mosquitoes, and I'm sure a lot of people is, and that's, and I agree with what John says, another mosquito, I brought it in.
I just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I will tell you, I've had a lot of people at fund days telling me, every parent there, "Why don't we spray for mosquitoes?" So, I will say, you're getting calls, I'm getting questions, especially at the park.
I bet I've got between 12 to 15 calls, you know, on this issue, and everybody said, "It worked before." Now, you know, I'm just going by what I'm hearing, you know, John may be right where it was dry, but, you know, if we get the calls, we have to at least get it addressed and...
Well, even with the comment on the fund days, up until, probably, he's probably still can't. They can't spray in the park, because they have to take that truck back through the woods, and it's been so wet.
And I understand through the woods, but I mean, people just saying, "Why aren't we," you know, asking me, "Why don't," especially when you see other communities, like Portland around mosquito lake, because, you know, when I said, "Oh," they said it was, you know, dangerous to, with the water. Well, how can they do it around mosquito lake then?
I was with people like, two weeks ago, and they were fighting pretty good, so that's not...
They're still spraying at other places, so that's another question. When they're spraying at other places, why can't they do it?
And for the public's information, I mean, I know you can get them at different department stores and stuff, there's an actual thing called a mosquito dunk or something. It looks like a birdseed doughnut. That's the best way to describe it. It looks like a birdseed doughnut, and it has the larvicide inside those little pellets, and you just throw it in the standing water. If you have a pond that's just like a stagnant pond, you can throw a couple of them in there, and now the larvae aren't going to be able to hatch. Or if you have swampy areas behind you that's got some low water laying, you can throw those things in there and stuff, but I just can't see where going down the road is really going to benefit, like I said, if people want to, I just, I can't support it.
Turning events such, so that in Highland, they do spray, and so the definitely case of the phone calls down.
I always thought it kept the mosquitoes away from me, so...
Okay, anything else the council would like to say?
Mayor, if I could, to address Bob's issue about the flag, my understanding that they started doing half-mast today, and it's for five days, one day for each of the servicemen.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you know, I can agree with that, Bob.
I think it comes from you, because it used to be that any time a flag was altered, it had to be from the governor or the president, but I think years ago, because of firemen being killed and things like that, mayors of communities can put it in there.
Dale, if you want to put that down, take care of that.
I have one, I have one thing.
Yeah.
Concerning the engineering agreement for CT, are you going to add to that tonight?
Yeah, I've got a...
How much is eight, John?
I have a thing from Chris here. I wish Chris was here, I was going to talk to him, but he said he had another obligation. I told him he was going to be quick, so... This is his last minutes that he had sent to me, and he's saying that the $5,000, he said, "Because it's difficult for them to complete all the stuff with North Point, because of the information that they're getting from them, that they're almost through the $5,000, and he would like to see it at least modified." In the last minutes that I've got.
How can they work into eight?
Well, I thought he had asked for eight verbally to me one time, but in his minutes it says five, so I wouldn't want to just do eight. This is all reimbursable monies from North Point.
Sixteen, eight thousand, and...
There's always add to it again.
It's not going to be good, but it's over.
Okay. And also, you should add something in your box about putting one dispatcher on and taking one dispatcher off. I'll ask the council approval for that. Okay, is there anything else the council would like to discuss before we adjourn the caucus and go on a regular meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I know I talked to you and I talked to Ronnie, and at next council meeting, I think I'll make a motion to do it, I won't do it tonight, but I want everyone to think about it. We want to advertise the old pumper, you know, the one that we put all the legislation together for the Lord Township, and they decided they didn't need the truck, so anyway, it's that 1982 Pierce Pumper Tanker, and we want to go ahead and authorize a clerk to advertise that for sale. We want to think about a minimum bid on it, you know, I did check all about five different scrap yards, three of them don't even want it, they're not interested in it, one of them told me to just tell them to take it down there and shred the whole truck. Then they deduct 100 pounds per tire, and there's 10 tires on this truck, so, but I want, I'd like everybody to think about it, you know, on the end, as far as a minimum bid, that truck weighs 24 ton, approximately 24 ton, and they buy everything on their gross ton, which is 2240 pounds for gross weight, and a couple prices I got was, one of them was 150 per ton, but they also take 100 pounds off of each tire off of that, so I'd like everybody to think about it and let me know, and then the next council meeting, we'll make a motion to do that. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, caucus adjourned, will not go to the regular meeting, I'd like to welcome everybody for coming this evening, and join me for the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and we will serve trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. And we shall not turn against you, but the Lord will turn against you. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dale, we've got a roll call, please. Mary Ellen, President. Mr. Bond?
Here.
Mr. Mansell?
Present.
Mr. Radka?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Present.
Clerk Blake?
Present.
Treasurer George Ebling?
Here.
Matt Van Sutch?
Here.
Police Chief Brett Milhohn?
Present.
Fire Chief Travis Eastham. Planning and zoning economic development Kelly Wardner?
Present.
Parks, Grounds, and Recommission Dale Graham?
Present.
Recreation Marty Gibson?
Here.
Board of Public Affairs?
Present.
National engineer Kristi Geller. The Alton Town Motion Excused Mrs. Jones, she's unavailable this evening. Mr. Kjellnik asked if he could be excused, and also, police, or fire chief Eastham. Moved by Mansell, second by Reader, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Entertained the motion for adoption of the agenda.
Salute.
Moved by Radka, second by Bond, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Entertained the motion for disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 15, 2015.
Salute.
Moved by Shealy, second.
Second.
Second, Mansell, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain from that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Four ayes, one abstention. Motion for payment of bills?
Salute.
Moved by Mansell, second Radka, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Mayor's report, every year I get a letter from Department of Liquor Control and ask if we have any questions with any problems with any of the permit holders in the village. If anybody does have any problems, I haven't heard of any real complaints. If you do, get back with me, and, you know, I can pass that on, but I don't think we really have any problems with any of the liquor permits in the village. Like to remind everybody, there's a power plant, Ohio Power Siding Board meeting next Tuesday on the 28th at 6:00. They will, the Power Siding Board will be running that meeting, and they will be accepting comments pertaining to the Lordstown Energy Center proposed site plan, and, you know, the project, and the public and everybody is invited to attend. It's on the mark yet already, okay. Another thing, you know, I'm sure everyone's heard, the power plant is also planning on taking the old school down, and it was kind of interesting talking to a couple previous board members, they said, "Well, the school was abated." Well, the thing is, is the laws, and time goes by, they had another abatement test, and they're estimating to get the building abated before they take it down is going to be about $180,000. So, that's, you know, for a building that supposedly was abated, I guess as time goes on, the rules get a little bit more stringent, they do more abating, so more on that as we find out actually what's going on, but Lordstown Energy Center did have somebody come in and do a complete test on that building, but it's going to be about $180,000 estimated to have the building abated before it gets taken down. And last but not least, anyone went to the county fair where they had the animals auctioned off and everything, Mr. Sidewitz from the Energy Center put a bid in on two of the fire chief's daughters' hogs, and he got the bid, and he gave me a call and asked what we would like to do with them, you know, if he knew anybody. He said, you know, "Do you have any organizations?" Well, I've been in touch with Mr. Ross at Ross Foods, and what we're going to try to do is, he will be donating the meat, and we will possibly use that toward a fundraiser for one of the village organizations, where Ross will prepare the meat, provide the rest of the meal, and, you know, we can have, it could be a fundraiser, so whatever would be left over after, Mr. Ross would take, you know, something for his efforts and everything. More on that as we get going, but Mr. Sidewitz did win two hogs, probably 200 pounds of pork or better. So, that's, I don't think that's going to Boston where he lives, so just to let you know that we will be using that for some sort of fundraiser for one of the entities in the village, and we're still working the details out on that. And also, I'll have one appointment and one unappointment for police dispatchers under new business. That's it for the mayor's report. Is there a court's report?
Yeah, I'd just like to let council know, August 3rd meeting will have a public hearing at 5:30 regarding defense orders.
Okay, any questions for Bill? Is there solicitor's report?
Just briefly, Your Honor, next Wednesday and Thursday, you and I will be going down to Cincinnati for the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals on the Trumbull County sewer case that is going to be argued, and then hopefully we'll have a decision by the end of the year.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt? You know he won't give us an answer, but we can at least ask questions. Okay, treasurer's report?
Mayor's report.
Any questions for George? Board of trustees, the public affairs report?
Just have one piece of legislation we'd like to see passed tonight.
Any questions for John? Dylan's engineer is not here this evening. Special reports, police chief Milhohn.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Brent? I see a lot of our signs getting put up everywhere.
Yes, we distributed 100, and we've, some people are still asking for them, but at this time, we have none to give out, but, yeah, we've distributed 100 so far.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brent? Travis is not here this evening. Planning and zoning administrator and director of economic development, Kelly?
In your boxes, you should have gotten our semi-annual zoning permit report, and also our semi-annual certificate of occupancy report. We've been trying to clean up those certificates of occupancies, there's some that, I think our oldest one on there was from back in 2010, for whatever reason, they just didn't get checked, so there's a couple from 2010, 2011, got those cleaned up, and the certificates of occupancy issued. A couple of the other things that are going on, since I did not do a written report, I'll just give you some highlights real quick, aside from the normal daily duties and the office visits, phone calls that we have from residents and stuff like that, it's normal. We've had some questions regarding some subdivisions and consolidations of various properties, various parks in the village, so we're working on those. North Point, as you know, their site plan review was held after two planning commission meetings, and that was approved, so they're clear to go for that, and we'll be issuing the zoning permit whenever they're ready for that. And Pappy Shack unfortunately has closed, if anybody is not yet aware of that, it's been a while now. I think they actually closed back in April, but I think they stayed open a little bit, and we're trying to do some sales and get, you know, some of their, maybe their equipment and some of their food products that they had sold, and unfortunately, you know, they're closed. We did have a new business that has come to Lordstown, and Ms. Catherine King went before the planning commission, she's running a daycare at 1600 Salt Springs Road called Lordstown Play and Learn. She went through, like I said, the site plan review with planning commission, and she was approved, so we'd like to welcome her to the village and hope that she does a good business, and we'll be here for her. I'm sure if anybody has any questions for her, she would be happy to answer them, she's a lovely lady. We've also had some contacts from some other potential new small businesses to come into the village, still working with them and seeing whatever they need, we have been providing them information, various forms and how to go through the process. One of them is, is that the Hoot and Holler was up for sale and has now been purchased. It is my understanding that they had a lot of clean out to do, and some of the freezers, I guess, weren't very good in there, so they happened to replace some of those, so if anyone sees activity, please know that I am aware of it, and I have spoken with the new owner and who I believe is going to be the manager of that business, I believe they're going to keep the name Hoot and Holler, and they are aware that they have to come in for a site plan review, not involving new construction before planning commission, so just want to let you know, if you see anybody, you know, over there working, I believe that that is what they're doing, is just prepping the building and making sure that they, you know, can sustain it, because I guess that there is a lot of, a lot of work that needs to be done internally in the, in the building, so it's going to take a while. We also had a hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals on an area variance on Huffman Drive, and that was ultimately denied. We are still working to obtain a grant for federal funds on the Salt Springs Road, South Levitt Road resurfacing, so that is in the process, all the documentation has been provided and up to date. We are still continuing our efforts to maintain compliance regarding, you know, I guess like, Noah could call it nothing else but junk on certain properties here in the village. To that end, we have secured two solid waste violations on a couple of the properties here in Lordstown, and, you know, all I can say about that is, it does give us the backing now of the county. The Trumbull County Health Department issued those solid waste violations, and that does help us, so that they have a little bit more, I think, oomph behind them in that, you know, they can do things that we can't here as a municipality, but the county can do a little bit greater things, and they're working on that, trying to get those properties cleaned up. And we have issued, unfortunately, about 25 zoning violations, well, since the beginning of summer, so I would call that from about May forward, and unfortunately, those have been for grass and weeds mostly, but I would like to report something positive about that, and that is that, you know, we have a lot of bank-owned properties here in the village, and sometimes it's very difficult to get them to comply with keeping those properties up nicely, and I am very pleased to report that I now have several contacts, different banks that are, and they're not all the same bank that owns some of these properties, but the different banks have now been providing me with a contact person in preservation societies or safeguard properties that they call, that's what they call, the different entities that can come in and clean these properties up for us, and they've really been doing a little bit better job responding to those zoning violations, and hopefully we can keep that moving in the future. And the last thing is, Denise and I attended a zoning seminar, day long, in Youngstown, Ohio, and we learned a lot there, and so I think that's going to be an annual event, and it's really interesting to talk to other zoning inspectors and their staff and, you know, learn what they have to offer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kelly? Okay, Parks, Grounds, Building, Street Superintendent, Mr. Graham.
Just that the paving program is going to be starting, Richard Old Town is what they're like, they'll be out there repairing partial depth repairs, full depth repairs, and everything that they didn't do last year for First Energy, we'll be starting that next week. Also contacted JS Masonry today, because they were supposed to be here a month ago for the handicap wall back here, we're on schedule to start tomorrow for them, so... And then Thursday, Ellsworth Bailey went to bid for the state project, and we haven't got the results of that yet, and we're doing the paving, but everything else is underway and on schedule.
That's the one, that's three different funding sources.
Yes, we have federal funding, state funding, and term fight mitigation fund.
Okay, any questions for Dale? Okay, recreation, Marty?
I have no report, but I would like to publicly thank Mr. Armstrong of the schools for allowing us to so simply move our community today into the school. I mean, he within 10 minutes called me back and said, "Jeff, you can use the school," and it worked out really nice, having it there, and his staff, and the Parks guys helped move and switch, and my group, people working for me, so just thank everybody for all their help, and those did help with the fishing derby too, with all the rain.
Any questions for Marty? I will say, a lot of people, I think, liked it up there, but then they did have it in the regular park on the corner.
And the only thing I thought, and I have thought about that, is because we'd all been stuck inside for so long, so we were ready to send their kids somewhere, but if it was 85 in beautiful water, I'm not sure they would want to be inside.
There you go. Okay, thank you, Marty. Dale, do we have any correspondence to see?
No correspondence.
Okay, public remarks. If you'd like to make a public remark, after I acknowledge you, please come to the microphone and give your name and address recorded in the minutes correctly. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul Cheney, 1873 Salt Springs Road, Lordstown, Ohio. My comments tonight are about the correspondence item that is on the agenda at every meeting. I can imagine the mayor and council received multiple communications in the course of one business. On the minutes that were approved tonight, there were two examples of such communications being read, one during the planning and zoning administrator, director of economic development report, and the other under correspondence item on the agenda which was read by solicitor Dutton. That item presented during correspondence, agenda item, was addressed to the mayor and council, members of council. It was from the planning commission and was a recommendation to the village council to repeal the entirety of codified ordinance 521.07-fences. My question is, with all the different communications received, what is the criteria that determines which items are read and which items are not? Earlier this year, the regular audit for years ending December 31st, 2012, 2013, was released by the state auditor. As a public document, this report is readily available for anyone to view on the auditor's website. There is another public document titled Management Letter, which is kind of a summary... document titled Management Letter, which is kind of a summary of the lengthy report, where the items from the audit are broken down by non-compliance findings and recommendations. This management letter, while being a public document, is not available for viewing on the auditor's website, but is available by request from the auditor. Like the correspondence read on June twenty, June fifteenth, twenty-fifteen, from the planning commission, the management letter from the state auditor is addressed to village council and states recommendations to village council. It appears both these communications are similar in nature, but only one has been reported as correspondence. Thank you.
Are there any other public remarks? Hearing none, are there any council remarks? Hearing none, we'll go on to committee reports. Final answer, Mr. Radka.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we just had one piece of legislation tonight we'd like to see passed emergency.
Any questions for Ron? Okay, parks, buildings, grounds, general improvements, streets and sidewalks, appearance of chairs, or anything from that committee this evening?
Just that one piece of legislation for the resurfacing of industrial trades, and I'd like to see it passed emergency.
Okay, any other comments? Public safety and welfare, Mr. Reader.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Don? Public utilities, Mr. Bond.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Bob? Transportation and recreation, senior services, Mr. Shealy. Questions for Howard? Okay, Bill, we got the first piece of legislation.
From the streets, sidewalks, public parks, buildings, grounds, General Improvement Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance accepting the bid of State Line Paving LLC, one-one-eight-two-two South Avenue, North Line of Ohio, four-four-four-five-two, for the two thousand and fifteen Lordstown Street Resurfacing Project, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
No, she was under rule.
Motion suspend the rules by Mansell, is there a second?
Second.
Second Shealy, roll call, please. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, motion carried to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Radka, second Bond. Comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, motion carried to adopt, ordinance thirty-five, two thousand and fifteen. Next, please.
From Board of Public Affairs for Emergency Passage, an ordinance accepting the bid of Martin Nutter for the purchase of one used, two thousand and three Chevrolet and Honda, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion suspend rules?
Motion by Radka to suspend the rules, is there a second?
So moved.
Second Shealy, roll call, please. Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, motion carried to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt? So moved. Moved by Mansell, second?
Second.
Second by Reader. Comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, motion carried to adopt, ordinance thirty-six, two thousand and fifteen. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance authorized by clerk to transfer the sum of thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents from the general fund into the Unclaimed Money Fund pursuant to ordinance thirty-nine ninety-nine and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion suspended.
Second. Motion suspended by Radka, second by Mansell, roll call, please. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, motion carried to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Bond, second?
Second.
Second Shealy, comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, motion carried to adopt, ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand and fifteen. Is there any old business council would like to discuss at this time? Only thing I'm gonna bring up is we will be having a meeting on August third, the first meeting, just we may have some legislation for that. I know we were talking about going to one meeting in June, July, and August, but we'll probably have that meeting, if I'm correct, John?
Yes.
So, that's all I have for old business. Anything else? New business, I'll go first. I'll entertain a motion to take off Melissa Rosamano, a part-time dispatcher, effective July seventh. Moved by Mansell, second?
Second.
Second by Radka. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Also, I'll entertain a motion to have Tom Watson put on as a part-time dispatcher, recommended by the chief.
So moved.
Moved by Bond, second?
Second.
Second Shealy, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any other new business council would like to discuss at this time? Hearing none, are there any additional public remarks? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mansell?
Second.
Second, second Shealy, Bond, Radka, Don. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.